Good evening and thank you everyone for coming out to join us tonight. It's July 3rd, 6 o'clock, time for our Register Schedule Board meeting. Tonight I've asked Eric Musgrove to open us with the invocation and the pledge, if you'd stand.
Let us pray. My Father and Heavens, we come to you today to thank you for all the wonderful blessings you have so richly put upon us. We thank you for this time that we have as a community, as a county, to come together and discuss and conduct the business that relates to each and every one of us. Pray that you will be with commissioners as they make decisions tonight that will bring honor and glory to you and to this community. Pray that you'll be with our armed forces, men and women that are serving overseas and here defending our rights and our freedoms. Pray that you'll be with the first responders. We especially thank you for this time that we have to celebrate the Fourth of July, the day from which we declare independence from Great Britain. Pray that you will help us as we remember this time in reflection tomorrow. Be with those who are sick, those who need a help. Be with the President and these of our nation. Pray they will live in peace with one another as much as is possible. Be with us all, so your sins are not be prayed.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 18th, 2018, for our Register Schedule Board meeting. Do they have any changes or anything added?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda, we have 2 through 11. Is there any wishing to be pulled for discussion? I have item 3 to be pulled for a comment, possible discussion. Any others? Hear none, they'll have a motion to approve 2, 4 through 11.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Going back to item number 3, authorization to advertise for bids for rodeo arena roof at Swanee County Coliseum. A member from the audience asked to speak.
Bruce Tillman, 7219-137, through. I really just wanted encouragement for you guys to press forward with that project. And over the past few years, I've spoken to some of you and the previous commissioners that was on the board. As it is right now, the arena gets wet on both ends, and that affects the health of the riders potentially in rodeos and the animals themselves. And over the last couple of years, I'd spoken to two different groups, Florida High School, Rodeo Association, and the Florida Junior High School. And I talked to both of those presidents, and they said that that one thing is the thing that keeps them from having an event here because they can't put their 25 or $40,000 horses at risk of injury. But I spoke today with some locals here again about it, and they reiterated the same thing. So I know there's limitations on what you can do sometimes on the budget side and just takes money, right? But I want you guys to press forward to that. Each one of those organizations had talked about that they could have a couple of events here a year, and both of them typically bring 100 family units, and that's three to five and a family unit. So it can affect us in many ways, campgrounds, restaurants, hotels. I know a lot of those guys, they have camper units inside their trailers, but still, that's a good boost for tourism, if you will. And then also, a little bit of a shout out to Greg and Jason, the guys in the community that they've been talking to, just applauded them for their cooperation and being open to discussion and help on it. So that was really all.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Does anyone else have anything they want to add on this item? If not, I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to item number 12, staff reports. Captain Allen, Extension Director.
Good afternoon. How are you guys doing today?
Doing good.
All right, so we have been really busy. We've just finished up a bunch of day camps, but we still have some more to go. We had Cloverbud, our ag one, our farm-to-table one was the kebab camp, and we also had a leader that did one of the pony camps. Coming up, we have Trash to Treasures, which is kind of a how to recycle, repurpose items, and that was brought back by popular demand. People kept asking for it. We also have for the kids 4H University. This is where the kids who competed in county events are going on to the state event at the University of Florida. We've got quilt camp, that's where the kids actually produce a lap quilt in a week. We also have the residential overnight camp, which is in Madison County, Camp Cherry Lake. And we have a large number of kids going again this year. We had, last year, we had a larger-than-normal group, and that's continuing. They've had really good experience out there and I think are telling their friends, so that's really exciting to see. And we'll have our second pony camp. And just to mention, we got a grant to purchase some embryology, some incubators, and so this fall we'll be starting an embryology project in the schools. So we're really excited about that, and people are always fascinated to see things, you know, grow and change, and so that'll be a really exciting program. We've had some representatives at some different programs. Some of you might have seen Kim Griffin at the Florida Association of Counties meeting. I know I saw a picture of one of you guys with her. Also Jane Man the Booth at the Florida Cattlemen's Association, again, representing Swanee County, so we did have a presence there. I did want to let you know that we have purchased some equipment, so we can now do some measurements for pond quality onsite rather than having to take samples and bring them back to our office and do it in a lab. So those direct measurements help to have faster results back to the consumer, so we're real excited about that. That includes dissolved oxygen, temperature, pH, some of those kinds of things. So we're real excited to have that equipment to be able to do those, to service customers out in the community. I'll be giving you some flyers, as well as they're located on the outside, about some of the upcoming ag workshop. There's a small ruminate workshop that's coming up, a livestock and forage field day. We'll also be having a beef quality assurance certification, so we have those. We're going to be hosting the dean and folks from sponsored research because they want to see how the research center and extension work together. Sometimes being on campus, they don't always see the different sides, and we do a lot of applied research. So their definition of applied research is maybe a little bit different, and so we're explaining this to a bunch of the folks that be and showing how we work together. So we're looking forward to that on the 27th. I don't know if any of you will be around, but you're more than welcome if you're interested. We are going to be looking here shortly for a new agronomy row crops, regional specialized agent. That was the position that Patrick Troy held, so we will be looking out for that. So if you have somebody that you know that might be good, again, this is a regional position, so this is something that they would service the northeast Florida component. They're housed at the research center, but they do service those other counties. Obviously, we're most important because they're housed right here, but wanted to let you know that we did submit a proposal for the big event. This is an internal grant through the University of Florida, and it's working with 4H and looking at community development from a beautification program. So we're going to tell you more, hopefully, once we get that. But it's combining community service, community development, intergenerational service learning kinds of things, so we're keeping our fingers crossed about that. We have been doing a lot of programs out in the community, thanks to the library, you know, they're great partners with us and allow us to do a lot of programs out there. So we've been doing a lot of nutrition programs, so we've been doing the kids' cooking series. We also have been working with ARC, Swanee River Economic Council, and also Workforce for their STEP program. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but that is something for, they're targeting a group of kids, young adults, that have really had some rough beginnings, and they need to learn in a safe environment about moving on to the next step. And so it's everything from career exploration, financial management, just all sorts of things. And some of you may have gotten a chance to interact with them, I'm not sure. They've had over a five-week program, and this is kind of a pilot test for this, for these individuals, so we've been working with them. I also wanted to let you know with our Faithful Families Grant that Kim Griffin is working on, they're looking at starting up the next phase of that. So the next one will be at Christ Central in McAlpin. So we'll be recruiting folks that are interested in starting healthy eating and physical activity programs in their own churches. That'll be where that program is held. So just a quick overview of some of the things that we've been doing. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Allen?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
How many are going to Cherry Lake?
I have to look back, but it's more than what we've had in the past. That's not been something that's been as well-attended, and I'm not sure why, but last year was the first year.
I already asked Kim, and she wasn't sure, so I just...
Yeah, I don't know Pam has that. I should have written it down, I apologize. I can get that number for you.
You can get it for me tomorrow, I just thought you were...
Okay, yeah. Not off the top of my head.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Remind you all that in the community also that starting on Friday, we'll have the state Babe Ruth Baseball Tournament for the nine-year-olds and 11-year-olds. They will swing by and they'll be on the turf fields, so they should be excited to be out there and some...
How many teams does that bring in, Greg?
We have, one division will be about seven and one will be nine. It's mainly North Florida teams.
Nice.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to general business. Item number 13, discuss state regulations with impact, which impact installation of septic tanks. We'll have Mr. Greg Bailey from North Florida Professional Services presenting for us.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
It is July, and it is the time of year when state regulations kick in that are passed by the legislature. What I'm going to talk about tonight is the Florida Springs Inocidal Protection Act and as it relates to OSTDSs or septic systems. The vast majority of our waste management in rural areas is septic tanks, and there is an impact to that, from that legislation. In 2016, the legislature passed the act and resulted in Part 8 of Chapter 373 Florida statutes, and this act contains language to address septic systems in the Springs Basin. This was done in an effort to reduce pollution in our springs. As part of the Basin Management Action Plan, the Department of Health, local governments, and local utilities are required to develop a plan to address onsite sewage treatment and disposal systems remediation. The original language in the statute related to at least a 20% contribution of non-pollute nitrogen from septic tanks. In Swanee County and in our rural area of North Florida, that is not the case. We don't meet that requirement. Typical contribution rates from septic systems are less than 10%. Some places are seven, as low as 3%, like in Hamilton County. But there was language in the rule that said, "Or if the department determines remediation is necessary to achieve the total maximum daily load." So the department chose to use that part of the statute and pretty much put this requirement statewide. Now, it does not apply to every county, there are subsets that they're looking at, and that's the priority focus areas. There has been one identified for Swanee County, and I'll go over that in just a minute. But as of July the 1st, if you're in one of these priority focus areas, you have three options. If you have a house or you need a septic system that you are located on less than one acre. If you're one acre and above, you're exempt from these regulations. First option is you can connect to a local municipal sewer if you don't have a septic system. If you're also in a septic-to-sewer conversion area, which there are none at the present time, you can put in a standard unit until such time as you get hooked to a sewer system. If one is planned for that area, then you can put in a standard unit for now until that becomes available. The third option is to install a nitrogen-reducing system. That's where the majority of the people are going to fall into. If you look on the slide with the map in purple that I provided to you, the purple area is the priority focus area for Swanee County. You can see it covers probably 80% of the county, starting from the western edge going over to the eastern edge. That, I've got some information to kind of give you that eastern boundary, just to give you an idea. It starts at the Hamilton-Swanee County line at 249, goes down to County Road 132, it goes over to County Road 795 down to I-10. I-10, it goes along I-10 over to 417, 417 down to US-90, US-90 over to 63rd, down to County Road 252, over to County Road 137, down to 216th Street, back over to County Road 49, and down to 27 at Branford. So that gives you from there all the way to the western boundary of the county is in a priority focus area. So anyone located in that area that's less than one acre of land would have to comply with this rule. All right, your three options, four septic systems in there. The first one is what we call a NSF 245 Class ATU. That ATU will provide a 50% reduction in nitrogen going into the soils with a standard drain field. Drain field provides a 15% reduction in nitrogen, which equates to a total of 65% reduction of nitrogen from that septic unit. The second option is a performance-based treatment system. Well, let me go back to the first option. The first option does not require engineering. It's standards that we've used along the river and other areas that have been in common practice for a while. Second option is a performance-based treatment system. That does require engineering, it does require additional permitting requirements. It has a lot more moving parts to it, if you will. Don't foresee that as being an option for most people. The third option, that is not available yet, and has not been written into the rule yet, Department of Health is working on, is an in-ground nitrogen-reducing biofilter. What this system is, it's a filter blanket that goes underneath a drain field. In a conventional drain field, you go out there, you've got a leach bed with pipes and gravel or some sort of aggregate that'll let it leach into the soil. You would still have that, but underneath that, instead of having native soil, we would have an 18-inch layer of nitrification soil, and below that, we have a 12-inch layer of this nitrogen-reducing media. The nitrogen-reducing media is a mixture of wood chips or sawdust and sand that goes underneath it. All of that has to be at least six inches above our wet season water table. So it's going to add quite a bit of thickness to your drain field for this type of system, which means the majority of those systems will end up being mounds instead of being in-ground, as they were before. So you will have some additional cost with that. The chart I gave you is a comparison of cost, a standard system that we used to do in last week. Approximately $3,000 installation cost, zero annual cost to the homeowner, it works in a passive environment. The first option is the Class 245 ATU with standard drain field. Preliminary cost we got is $8,000 for that. That does require operating permits from the Department of Health and a maintenance contract with an entity to oversee the system for an annual cost of $350. It does require continuous operation of an electrical blower because it is an aerobic unit, so you do have additional cost to the homeowner for electricity for running that, and then you've got the normal wear and tear of the mechanical parts. The third option, or the next option, was the performance-based treatment system. Those are estimated to range anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000. Again, we have $350 in operating cost for the permitting and the maintenance entity, but typically with PBTSs, we also see an addition of monitoring cost for doing samples and the like. Those also have blowers and other parts, so you do have electrical demand and usage at that. The last one is the in-ground nitrogen-reducing biofilter. That is a new, very new technology, very new system that the department has been experimenting with. Like I said, it's coming into the rules later this summer, possibly. Right now, the best we got is an estimate of about $10,000 plus for that. It does not have any annual cost because it'll be done as a standard permit, but there's a lot of questions left as far as the longevity of it and things. They've been running these systems for about 30 months now. They, as far as the treatment of them, the treatment for nitrogen is very effective, but there are some questions as far as how long they will last without having to be replaced and what will happen during the life cycle of that material. That is the new rule that's coming into effect. I will tell you some of the things. I've had other citizens blame Florida County Commissioners, so you will get those calls. You did not pass it. This is a state legislative mandate that's been pushed down to everybody else in an effort to protect our springs. With that, I'll answer any questions we have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Couple of weeks ago, I was up in Tallahassee for the DEP office, and I had some questions and comments, and I was supposed to get some of those guys reps to come and do a presentation that they did in Tallahassee concerning, I think it's the performance-based treatment system, that one, the third one that you're talking about. And there were supposed to be some funds to help with the cost of one of these septic tanks that would be, to be put in the ground. My question was, and I'll pose this question to you. Who are the ones that will determine, whether it be you, your company, determine whether they have to have that certain type of tank? Because I think it's going to be cost-driven to the people here in Swanee County when they may not need that. Who are the ones to determine whether they will have to have that?
Well, it's still permitted through the Department of Health. It would still go through the local county health department. But instead of being able to put in, if they're less than an acre, instead of being able to put in a standard unit, if they're in that area, they're going to have to put in one of these three systems.
Okay.
All right? That's going to be up to the homeowner and what the contractor gives them as far as what their preferred cost is and what headaches they want to go with it.
What I was looking at, you may have that contract out there to say you need this, and it don't require that. That's going to help.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Currently, the Health Department makes the decision on these septic tanks anyway. Particularly, they've placed more emphasis on the drain field, to be honest with you, and they'll continue to do that. So all of this rests with the Health Department, and I'm glad that you asked that question and it came out that the Health Department is going to handle this because when people come in to pull a building permit, the only thing that the County Commission Department handles is the building permit portion of that with the relationship structure. The balance of that has to go over, and the septic tank permit is actually processed by the Health Department. So their people will be making the determination.
Okay.
They're going to determine based on lots of different factors, I imagine, but then ultimately, they're going to say, "This is the type of system that you need to put in," and it may be an option that you can choose from here, but it'll be one of these. Then it'll be up to the people to decide how they're going to pay for it.
I see very few, the engineered systems typically we see tend to be more commercial-related, not residential-related.
Okay.
They'll pick, in my, from what I've seen, is they're either going to pick the first option, which is the 245 ATU with a standard drain field. The Department of Health has permitted those in previous sites. They know what they are, they know what to look for, they know how to deal with them. Or when this new biofilter comes out, some may opt to do that because it is a passive system, you don't have the annual operating cost, we don't have any moving parts, so to speak, but there are some questions that have to be answered. You know, typically, you can, you know, we look at getting maybe 10 years out of a drain field before we have to replace it. It may last 10 years, it may only last five, it may last six. We don't know yet. We don't have any data going out that far to say what's going to happen with it.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Do you believe that these, this determination as to what type of drain field system or septic system will be required can be analyzed with a simple PERC test?
Yeah, they'll still be doing, the Health Department will still be doing their standard investigation that they do, which system you want to put in. It's really going to boil down to which you'll get the best value. If the contractors, once they get accustomed to this biofilter, the cost may come down. But right now, we're looking at, because of the construction techniques and the amount of time it takes to build that, it's going to be more expensive.
Sounds like we just have to encourage people to buy more properties instead of less.
I will, I look for developers to really, not really do anything less than one acre is what I think for new lots now. It's going to be your existing lots are going to be the ones...
That's where it's going to hurt you, is any of your existing subdivisions that are already an acre or less.
You know, if you're building...
If there's, if there's an existing septic tank on those acres, it's only new systems, correct?
It's for new construction.
It's for new construction right now. Not to say they won't change it, but right now, it's only for new construction.
From what research you've done, are you seeing them possibly making a push in the future to include all acreage and not just one acre or less?
I look for it to be expanded over time.
Listen, it took at least 20 years to get to this point.
I understand, but it seems to be steamrolling since that Spring Act came through.
I don't disagree.
And the reason I brought that asset is every year, we set legislative priorities that we want to talk to our representatives about, and I think we need to put this one at the forefront of our list. If they're going to start with an acre, it's not going to be too much longer. They're going to be at five acres and 10 acres, no matter what you've got. And if we don't speak up now, it's harder to get them to go back and do it.
You trust they hit it.
My concern is it's not going to be, they're going to initially look at doing that, they're going to start grabbing repairs and other stuff.
Right.
Other stuff hits every day.
You're putting in your drain field and say...
Yes.
I got you, I got you.
Well, what it's going to cause more than anything is people do their own repairs, and I mean, you tell somebody they've got to put a $10,000, $15,000 system in it, you're going to get some 55-gallon drums and some rocks.
Well, the concern...
I'm not saying I do, I'm just saying, you know that's what's going to happen in some places.
The concern in North Florida to me is affordable housing.
Right.
You've got a young couple trying to get started, get a home. Now all of a sudden, we've got additional, you know, $5,000, $10,000 cost that they didn't have to pay last week, but now they're going to have to.
Where can we get away from it? Here's the one to blame right here.
Yeah, it's his fault.
Yeah, it's his fault.
Come on up, take the blame.
Yep.
Gentlemen, Kerry Waldron, Administrator for the Department of Health, and no, it's not my fault. This was Springs Protection Legislation that was passed, and Senator Rob Bradley was the author of that legislation, who's our senator.
Is our senator, yes.
I really think it would behoove you all to put on your list because there is sentiment that over the next 20 years, there is an intent to have all septic tanks replaced to that are non-nitrate systems. I would point out that in Swanee County, about 4% of septic tanks generate the nitrate, so we're dealing with a small percentage. But we do, I wanted to, purpose of my... But we do, I wanted to, purpose of my approaching y'all tonight is to let you know, found out today, and it was confirmed, that the Florida Building Association has asked for an extension on the B-maps, which are the Basin Management Area Protection Maps, so that, and there's some concern about the new system that they're putting, the new rule out that's got the filter layer underneath. So right now, according to the Department of Health out of Tallahassee, we are acting and inspecting and taking applications based upon current rules for septic systems. So until this goes through the process of the extension and the administrative hearing rules, we are still putting in septic tanks under the current existing rules.
That's good to know.
These, we've had major discussions, not only in our office, but with our colleagues across the state, because there are some major concerns about what we'll have to do from a permitting standpoint, but about the cost of these systems in the future. And Commissioner Fleming, you mentioned about money. We've heard that there's money coming to help people install these systems, but that's money coming. It has not been appropriated yet. So, but right now, we are still accepting applications, but the permit will be reviewed based upon what current law is. So you could, if you're less than an acre, you could still put in a conventional system at this time. But once the process is gone through on the administrative hearing part and the review, then we would be, have to comply with the new state legislation. That make any questions there from that point, Randy?
How long's a permit good for?
Mr. Bill Jenkins, who is my environmental health manager, I don't want to tell you wrong.
18 months.
18 months?
Yes, sir. That can be extended out to 21 with a ladder at the end of 18 months, but 18 months is good.
Okay. If you've got any one-acre lots, might want to get a permit quick.
Lots of counties are small. They process them, they got a ton of-
I can imagine.
Yeah.
Especially developers turning in 10 or 15 at a time.
We saw an increase in our office as well, but now we will process those under current-
And if one comes in-
Under existing rules.
Okay. You get one Thursday or Friday, they're going under the existing rule until the process is played out.
That is correct.
Any questions from anybody in the audience? Any, if you want one? Any questions? Anybody got anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item 14 has been pulled, discussed at a future meeting. Item 15 is schedule a commissioner trip to evaluate multiple projects within the county. Turn our attention to Randy Harris, County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think we've communicated with each of you regarding a date and time that will work, so that we can take a ride around, look at some road projects, and probably take a look at that rail spur as well. The date that we've written in, unless some of you have a problem with it, is July the 10th at 8:00 in the morning. We'd meet at Swanee Valley Transit Authority and hijack a van and hopefully wrap this trip up pretty quick. Hour and a half, maybe. But in any event-
Three hours.
Time check?
8:00. That's 8:88 AM. July the 10th.
July the 10th.
I'm fine with that, as long as everyone else is.
Yeah.
You all have any?
No, I'm good with it.
July 10th at 8?
Yep.
Yep, 8:00.
Where we meeting at?
Here.
Transit.
Transit, Swanee Valley Transit.
We'll meet at the Transit Authority. You won't be asked to take any action on anything. This will just be kind of a fact-finding, just take a look at projects, and I'll try to provide some limited information about each of the projects as we make the rounds.
All right. Any questions, any concerns?
Is this, I read the email from Mr. Ravat. Is this going to be one that the public can go along if they so choose?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. In fact, we'll run an ad in the newspaper as well.
We'll have to advertise it, just like a meeting. There'll be someone from the clerk there, newspaper. If he wants to go, we'll be there, and members of the public. Be no different than the trip we took when we looked at the Sable Trail Pipeline, where it was going to come through, under the Swanee River. We had media, people from the public, and the clerk of the board there. You just need a consensus of the board, or you want a motion?
I do need a consensus. I'm okay with that.
I'm good with everything.
I'm good with it.
All right.
All right. Moving on to item 16, discuss possible board action, any associated, any issues associated with the water or wastewater plant at I-75, County Road 136.
I don't have any updates on that right now.
All right. We'll move on to additional agenda items. We just have one. Consider a request to set the proposed millage rate for 2018, 19. Turn our attention over to clerk of the court, Mr. Barry Baker.
Mr. Chairman, it's that time of the year to take and set the proposed not-to-exceed millage rate for the 18, 19 fiscal year. The current year gross taxable value for Swanee County is $1,847,846,743. Your current rollback rate is 8.3298 mils. The rollback rate is the rate that would generate the prior-year tax revenues, less allowances for new construction, additions, deletions, or the annexations. Each mil generates $1,847,847 approximately. Last year at this time, you as a board set the proposed not-to-exceed millage rate at As a reminder, once you set the proposed millage rate, the proposed not-to-exceed millage rate tonight, you can lower it at any time until the final budget hearing. But once you set the millage rate tonight, you cannot raise it after this point.
Thanks, sir. Questions, comments, desire?
Stick it to 9%.
I'm good with 9%. Or I'll take that in a motion in a second.
Have to make a motion to stay at 9.
I'll second.
Got a motion to stay at 9 mils, or to set the tentative millage rate at 9, like Commissioner Sessions, a second by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion?
I think we can beat it again this year, but I don't want to go down.
I'm fine with it.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Randy might be able to answer this question. Do you remember what the, just freshen my memory of the rollback was last year, how we did comparison year-over-year?
I don't remember.
I think we were 8.5 before, and we went down to 8.3.
No, I can't remember. Last year, I think, was the first year of the rollback, actually rollback.
I, it's the rollback rate was actually a little higher, I think, last year. Is that correct, Eric?
I'm looking.
I believe it was presented higher, but after some recalculations, it went down.
It did go down.
8.9540.
Which one?
The corrected rate was 8.9540.
Okay.
Yeah, but when we, when it was, I think, published, it was just a tad over, and then there was some refiguring on it, and that was the first time since I'd been on the board that it had went.
Not that far.
It was actually a rollback. So this year, it's, it's a lot better than it was previous year.
If it's all right with the board also, it's where they will bring proposed, will bring some days for the proposed tentative and final budget hearings at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? We've got a motion by Commissioner Sessions to set the tentative millage rate at 9 mils. I got a second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign? All right. No other additional agenda items. At this time, public concerns and comments. Anyone wishing to speak, they'd make their way to the podium. Name and address for the record. Hear none. Move on to administrator comments. Chairs?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm just going to make a very brief comment, and then we will have an agenda item that will cover this on your next agenda. We opened bids today on the chip seal surface treatment that we've been doing, and we were pleasantly surprised. We realized what I think is a pretty significant reduction in the proposals that were submitted. Appears that the apparent low bid on the double-chip seal is 22% less than what we had been paying. And the triple-chip seal is 33% less than what we have been paying. So we've got real good numbers.
Yeah.
That's great.
That's a good thing.
That's good.
So next year, we should be able to do at least a mile.
No.
Is that it? Anything else?
I didn't have anything.
Board members' questions and comments? Start now with you, Michelle.
I hope you have anything other than just a happy 4th of July to everyone. I will mention, I know a lot of us went to Orlando last week for the fact meetings, and I tell you, that's a real good program. I'm glad that we're part of that, and hats off to Mandy. She always sets us up and sends us in the right direction there. So it was a lot of things, a lot of good things that we learned, or at least I know I did. So, and I've discussed a few with Mr. Harrison. That's all I really got to say.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sessions?
Just want to echo what Commissioner Hill says. Please be safe tomorrow. Tomorrow's going to be one of the bigger traffic days of the year, and just pay attention out there because a lot of distracted people.
Thanks, sir. I just wish everyone a happy 4th. Mr. Fleming? You have anything, Mr. Fleming?
No.
No, no.
I just, I was lost. But I would say-
What are we doing here?
Tell everybody on tomorrow. But I do want to mention the lights. The lights, they're looking great out there.
They are, they are.
And I think when they get those mats, like on the interstate, it's going to look a whole lot better.
Uh-huh.
So it's looking good out there on the way to work at night, and coming in in the morning time. If I have a flat, I won't be afraid to get out.
Thanks, sir. Sorry to wake you up. Just a reminder, tomorrow, I believe tomorrow's the Freedom Fest in Lavo. I don't know what time it starts, and then 5:30, and then the festivities in Brantford, and the fireworks also in Brantford tomorrow. There's a parade, I believe, too, isn't there? And then there's just, I've got one thing I want to read, everyone. This is from Representative Neil Dunn. Dear Commissioners, I recently saw promotional video the Swanee County Economic Office released and thoroughly enjoyed it. The video and voiceover were extremely well-done and do a fantastic job at piquing interest in beautiful Swanee County. I'm grateful for the support you always offer. You're doing a wonderful job for Swanee County, and I commend you for it. Because of people like you who take pride in our great state, we have a bright future ahead of us. Sincerely, Neil Dunn, Member of Congress. So I just wanted to, that was the video that was done through the TDC, and I don't know what the views are up to now, but I know it had a pretty good 65,000. If you haven't seen it, I believe it's on YouTube, Facebook. Need to look at it. Did a really good job. Visit Swanee. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless anyone else does. Motion to adjourn.
Smooth.
Thank you all for coming out.